Well, good afternoon. We're gonna go ahead and start the School Board of St. Lucy County. It's September the 12th at 5:01 in remembrance of the 2,996 people who lost their lives on September the 11th, 2001. We're gonna have a formal presentation of the colors by St. Lucy West Centennial High School Navy JROTC, followed by Belle Eauois Choral Group from Lincoln Park Academy, who will sing the National Anthem under the direction of Mr. Ramey. After the National Anthem, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Cadet Lieutenant Casey Scott, followed by a moment of silence. Then after the colors are retired, we're gonna recite the kids at Hope pledge. So let's please stand for the colors.
Come on! Left, right, left. Can't breathe, can't listen. Ready, set. Right, left, left. Left, right, left. Left, right, left. Mark, time, mark. Center, up. Present, march.
Oh, say, can you see? By the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets were clear, the bombs bursting in air? In air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Home of the brave?
I love the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your model for its standness, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on, ladies and gentlemen. Come on, ladies and gentlemen. Come on, ladies and gentlemen. I love the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your model for its standness, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Final questions? Come on, ladies and gentlemen. Can't breathe, can't listen. Ready, set. Mark, time, mark. Left, right, left. Boy, boy, left, right, left. I give thee the central call of the house, the Lord is the Lord, he is the Lord. I do all should be able to discuss, no exceptions. Ladies and gentlemen. I give thee the central call of the house, the Lord is the Lord, he is the Lord. I do all should be able to discuss, no exceptions. Ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, St. Lucy West Centennial High School and all their administrators.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin and Dr. Perry for putting together an excellent night and being able to remember the past and hear the future. As we go forward, I'm gonna open up the public hearing right now. This is for the adoption of our millage rates. I'm gonna open this up and open the public hearing right now. Mr. Stephen Opel, would you like, is this what you're here to address, sir?
Yes.
Please come forward then. If you will, just state your name for the record and your residency, please.
Stefan Opel, 1901 Southwest Exeter Court, Port St. Lucie.
Oh, I forgot my other job. We have three minutes for you to speak and the attorney on my right will keep the record for you. Please go ahead, sir.
Okay, so I have a couple of points. The first one is a question, and I'm just gonna give all my questions at once so that I have my three minutes and then hopefully you can answer. Florida statute title, 48, Chapter 1,001, Section 395 defines the base salary for school boards in the state of Florida. My question for you is, how is your salary deviating from the base salary that the state seems fit with $8,333 and versus the roughly $50,000 base salary that each of the board members here have? That's my first question. Again, I'm just looking to get some ideas and clarification where that comes from. Next question is, now I'm looking at teacher salaries, and the teachers, I hope you agree with me, that is our largest asset for a school district because those are the ones that educate our children. So taking care of our teachers should be top priority. If I did the math right, in the last budget, teacher salaries in total came out at about 201 million.
Mr. Opel?
Yes.
This is about the, go ahead, stop the time, would you please? This is for the millage rate. Are you here to talk?
Yes, yeah, because I mean ultimately, your budget-
Okay, go ahead. I'll go ahead and let you start.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, no, it's fine.
And for the teachers, then we come to a benefit on average of 22,000. When I compare that to the average benefit on the board with 29,000, why are the average teacher falling $7,000 or almost $8,000 short on that one? And the last point that I would like some clarification is budget item account number 6300, Instruction and Curriculum Development Services. If I did the math right, for the last budget year, that was about $8,750,000 for curriculum development every single year, and then Martin County does the same apparently.
Thirty seconds remain.
Pardon?
Thirty seconds remain.
Do the laws of physics change every year that we have to develop a new curriculum every single year and spend $8,750,000, give or take, on it? So I just would like to know on that end where my money, you know, or the taxpayer money goes. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, Mr. Opel. Thank you for coming, and some of those questions are gonna be answered by Mr. O'Leary and Dr. Wowe, our deputy chief. Actually, I should turn this over to the superintendent and he'll tell you.
Now, I'd be happy, we can have a staff member address you at the back, and we'd be happy to get those answers for you.
Yep.
And thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, Mr. Superintendent. Anyone else that would like to address the millage rate? I'm gonna go ahead and close public hearing. We're gonna call our chief financial officer up, Ms. Michelle Thomas.
Good evening, Chair Ingersoll, board members, Superintendent Prince. This is the final budget hearing. The tentative budget hearing was held on August 1st, 2023. The information regarding millage rates is exactly identical to what was presented on August 1st with a slight change in budget, so we will go through this fairly quickly while I still covered the required elements. At the end of the presentation, we will vote to approve final millage rates. After final millage rates are approved, we will vote to approve the final budget and resolutions, all three resolutions at one time. This slide shows the taxable value, millage, and tax collection revenue estimates at 100% and 96%. We budget at 96%, and last year we collected 96.5%. As a reminder, the board must levy the 3.1640 required local effort millage and the 1.0000 voted operating millage. The 0.7480 discretionary millage and the 1.5000 capital operating millage are maximums. The only action the board could take would be to reduce those, and I do not recommend reducing. The total millage is 6.4120. The board does not have the authority to increase the millages as they are set by legislature, and it is our maximum millage for the 23-24 school year. This slide shows a history of the millage rates going back to 2007 and '08. Over this timeframe, our highest millage rate was in 1011 at 8.1770. This slide shows the break between the operating capital and voted millages and where the legislature demanded a shift. Capital outlay shifted from two mills in '07-'08 to one and a half mills in '09-'10. Beginning with the 1920 fiscal year, we have an additional one-mill voted operating millage. This slide shows the average impact to annual taxes of homeowners in the county. We get this information from the property appraisers office each year. The average taxable value in the county increased by approximately 15.7%. There is a reduction in the non-voted millage by 1.22% and an increase in the annual taxes of the average homeowner by $140.49. This slide shows the taxable value history. The entire county's gross taxable value makes up the taxes that you will see on the next slide. This slide shows the gross tax collection history and excludes the voted one-mill. I will show the impact of the one-mill on the next slide. On this slide, you can see the impact that the additional voted one-mill will have on our collections for '23-'24, resulting in $41 million of additional revenue. This is the fifth year recognizing revenue from the one-mill, as it was renewed in November 2022, for an additional four years as by law. The additional revenue generated from this one-mill is used to recruit and retain qualified teachers, improve school security, improve mental health services, and fund other essential operations that preserve important school programs. As required by law, the one-mill is proportionately shared with charter schools. Something to note is that tax collections and taxable values are not increasing at the same rate. From '22-'23 to '23-'24, the taxable value increases 18.16%, but the tax collections, the collections increased 16.6. That is because the legislature mandates what the required local effort is, and they've kept all of our other millage rates. Looking back at '07-'08, we were collecting $185 million. For consistent comparison purposes, we exclude the additional voted one-mill on this slide. We would be proposed to collect $221 million this year, so we are up $36.5 million compared to that benchmark year, and cumulatively $450.6 million in reduced tax burden to the property owners in the county. Incorporating the voted one-mill, we are proposed to collect $262 million and over by $77.4 million compared to that benchmark year, but still down cumulatively $299.5 million in reduced tax burden to the property owners. The rollback rate discussion is something we are required to talk about. Here's a table that will help explain it. In '22-'23, the taxable value was $36 billion. The millage rate was 6.4790. That millage rate generated $233.5 million. The rollback rate is a calculated rate that will generate the exact same revenue using this year's net taxable value. The calculated rollback rate is 5.6954. So 5.6954 times the current taxable value generates $233.5 million. Since we have a proposed rate of 6.4120, which exceeds 5.6954, we have to compare those two and make a public statement that the proposed rate is 12.58% greater than the rollback rate. Here's the summary of the budget. This includes beginning reserves, revenues, appropriations, and ending reserves. Grand total of $1,267,7891, which is amended throughout the year by official board action. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Mr. Superintendent?
I recommend the board approve the final required local effort millage of 3.1640 mills as specified in the Resolution 2023-24, Trim A.
It has a recommendation?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion carries five zero.
I recommend the board approve the final district school tax discretionary operating millage of 0.7480 mills as specified in Resolution 2023-24, Trim A.
Heard the recommendation of superintendent. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved?
Second.
Got a second discussion. Seeing none. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion carries five zero.
I recommend the board approve the final district discretionary local capital improvement millage of 1.500 mills as specified in Resolution 2023-24, Trim A.
Heard the recommendation. Can I get a motion?
So moved, second.
Got a first and a second discussion. Seeing none. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion carries five zero.
I recommend the board approve the final district additional voted millage of 1.0 mills as specified in the Resolution 2023-24, Trim A.
Yeah, I heard the recommendation. Can I get a motion?
Move approval.
I got a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none. Those in favor, aye. Motion carries five zero.
I recommend the board adopt the 2023-24 final budget in the amount of $1,267,7891.
Heard the recommendation, superintendent. Does, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second discussion. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion carries five zero.
I recommend the board adopt Resolution 2023-24, Trim B, and Resolution 2023-24, Trim C.
Heard the recommendation, superintendent. Those in fa, can I get approval? Got a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion, seeing none. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion carries five zero.
I recommend the board approve the final district discretionary local capital improvement millage of 1.500 mills as specified in Resolution 2023-24, Trim A.
Heard the recommendation. Can I get a motion?
So moved, second.
Got a first and a second discussion. Seeing none. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion carries five zero.
I recommend the board approve the final district additional voted millage of 1.0 mills as specified in the Resolution 2023-24, Trim A.
Yeah, I heard the recommendation. Can I get a motion?
Move approval.
I got a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none. Those in favor, aye. Motion carries five zero.
I recommend the board adopt the 2023-24 final budget in the amount of $1,267,7891.
Heard the recommendation, superintendent. Does, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second discussion. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion carries five zero.
I recommend the board adopt Resolution 2023-24, Trim B, and Resolution 2023-24, Trim C.
Heard the recommendation, superintendent. Those in fa, can I get approval? Got a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion, seeing none. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion carries five zero. Good, we get to get paid this year. Let's go ahead and move to special orders of business, Mr. Superintendent.
All right, this time I'm gonna invite our chief communications officer extraordinaire, Ms. Lydia Martin, for our special orders of business. Lydia?
Thank you, Chairman Ingersoll.
Board members.
Board members, Superintendent Dr. Prince. At this time, I'd like to invite up the representatives from the chorus, Dikne Harpner, chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, to read a proclamation in honor of Constitution Week. Nikki Kalida and Donna Nieldich.
Hello. I'm Nikki Kalida with the DAR. This is the School Board of St. Lucy County's proclamation designated September 17th to the 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week. Whereas Constitution Week is the commemoration of America's most important document and is celebrated annually during the week of September 17th to the 23rd. And whereas September 17th, 2023, is the actual 236th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America. And whereas the Constitution ensures the rights of every American and provides the framework for the administration of our country, yet few know the date or celebrate its importance in any fashion. And-
And whereas the United States Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. Whereas the celebration of Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution, which petitioned Congress in 1955 to set aside September 17th through 23rd annually to be dedicated to the observation of Constitution Week. Said resolution be later adopt, being later adopted by the US Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956 by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucy County does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th, 23rd, 2023 as Constitution Week in the St. Lucy Public Schools and encourages all citizens to observe the importance of the day in the nation's history through activities, learning, and local events.
Thank you so much. If you will, just a second. We're gonna vote on your proclamations, Mr. Superintendent.
I recommend the board adopt the proclamation designating the week of September 17th to 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week in St. Lucy County Public Schools.
All right, just, board members, you heard the recommendation of superintendent.
So moved.
I have a motion, a second, discussion. Seeing none. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion carries five zero. We're gonna come down and get a picture with you.
Okay, can we say a few words?
Sure, go ahead.
Chairman Ingersoll, members of the school board, and Superintendent Prince, we thank you for the opportunity to come before the school board to proclaim the Constitution Week. We would like to invite the public to stop by our booth at the Fort Pierce Farmer's Market Saturday, September 16th from 8 to noon. We will be distributing Constitution booklets and providing information about our chapter. And in addition, we invite the community to join us this Sunday, September 17th, as we will be ringing bells for one minute before PM. Joining our national DAR sisters to celebrate bells across America just as the church bells of Philadelphia rang out when the US Constitution was first signed at 4:00 PM. We do this to remember the many freedoms this document has given us, and thank you for the support, thank you for your support of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and may we present the board with Constitution booklets.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
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 Good evening, Mr. Ingersoll and Superintendent Wayne, I was gonna call you Wayne. I was just- I was just joking. I want to see if you're paying attention. Dr. Prince, Dr. Prince, and all you board members. You're welcome. I'm, I always get in trouble, so I'm used to it. First and foremost, I want to share that we've been in partnership for more than 20 years. And, um, in our partnership for more than 20 years, we've seen so many great changes happen between the Boys and Girls Clubs and St. Lucie Public Schools. And I want you all to know that we're extremely proud of our partnership. And with the partnership, we have been able to do some remarkable things working together with Dr. Perry. As you all know, he is the incoming board chair for the Boys and Girls Clubs. And we had a mission that we wanted to be in two high schools. And with working with your team, Dr. Perry, and everyone else, we started that mission. And this summer, I'm proud to say we had 200 teenagers in our Westwood location as well as our Treasure Coast High School, and it continues to grow. With that, we have added a workforce component to that where we're able to not only give the kids or the teenagers some enriching programs, we're also are able to give them little stipends to get some work experience, and that has worked very well. In total, this summer, we had 560 teens that worked with us, each of them receiving stipends, working through the community, and working at the Boys and Girls Clubs in various jobs. One of my other exciting things that I would like to share is that we have 30 certified teachers at our locations, and we could see the improvement and be, thank you. There you go. I'm not technology savvy here, as you can see. But we have 30 certified teachers, which has been awesome for us, allowing us to serve almost 16,000 youth annually. A few years back, we had come to the schools and said that any, any youth that went to the Boys and Girls Clubs or any after-school program should take advantage of meals for evenings. And proud to say, working with St. Lucie Public Schools, your cafeteria folks have helped us with 270,000 meals served annually, which I think deserves a hand clap because none of our kids go home hungry. As I mentioned... As I had mentioned, we are in 17 of your schools, eight are elementary, seven middle, K through eight, and two high schools. And the programs that we're working on are education and career, character and leadership, as you read along with me. We also work with promoting synergies between our clubs, our youth, and the community. When we look at what our youth are doing today, and I saw a great demonstration of the talent that we have, the synergies that we have with St. Lucie Public Schools is one that should be commended because we always are working hard, we're meeting, we're talking about it, and we're making things happen. We couldn't have done this without founders. You have a founder on your board in Jack Kelly, who's helped us start this 30 years ago, which deserves a hand clap. I also want to talk about Dr. Perry, who's been on our board for almost eight years, who has been a remarkable asset to us understanding the needs of the teachers and the principals. But I really want to give a big hand to those teachers and principals because we realize that we are in their schools, and we do our very best to make sure that we not only take care of the space, but that we're aligned with what they're needing from us, for their kids. And then Dr. Prince, the work you do as a superintendent, and making sure that you and I get to meet often and talk about the needs, also has been remarkable for the Boys and Girls Clubs. Lastly, we could not have done this without our supporters. We have lots of supporters in our communities, and they continue to work with us and try to find synergies to make sure that we're taking care of our prized possession and our young people. So thank you all for what you do. We're going to continue working hard. Boys and Girls Clubs is celebrating 30 years this year, and we hope to continue doing this and building on our partnership. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to invite Denise Rodriguez, Executive Director of Teaching, Learning, and Leading, who will recognize our recent SWEL graduates.
School Board Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince, in October of 2019, St. Lucie Public Schools wrote and received a grant in partnership with Florida Atlantic University to offer our employees the opportunity to earn a master's degree in school counseling. This grant provided a customized program locally, and we were able to offer our applicants a significant discount to tuition and access to free books and materials. Through this grant, St. Lucie Public Schools has three staggered cohorts of graduates totaling 75 counselors that will fill a much-needed role in our schools as counselors are in short supply. We appreciate the work of April Mensey, the original grant coordinator, and our partnership with Florida Atlantic University's Dr. Valaris for making this possible. This evening, we would like to honor our second cohort of graduates from the SWEL program to receive a certificate. These graduates have worked to complete all of the requirements to be a school counselor and plan to use their expertise to support our students in St. Lucie Public Schools. At this time, I would like to ask the following graduates to come to the front of the room to be recognized. Marie D'Arcelia. Kimberly Durant. Priscilla Griffin. Chad Householder. Claudia Jackson. Heather Malone. Ayesha Mickens. Monique Ware. Desiree Williams. And Germith, Ojay was not able to attend this evening. I would also like to invite Diane White, who had to come and participate in this picture as she is a retired school counselor and has provided countless hours of mentoring and support to all of our students and especially this cohort. Lastly, I would also invite Dr. Valaris to this picture as she has supported this program and designed it to meet the needs of St. Lucie Public Schools. Please join us for this picture. And we have one last name, Angelica Gutierrez.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the cohort. Number two, from our SWEL graduates. Thank you. All right, congratulations to all of our SWEL graduates. At this time, I'd like to invite Mark Dionisio, Wellness Manager, who will give some information about our recent partnership with Cleveland Clinic and the Transportation Summer Wellness Project.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ingersoll, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Prince. I'm here this afternoon to extend my heartfelt appreciation to Cleveland Clinic Florida and specifically to Ms. Kelly Hensley, the Florida Regional Director of Events and Community Partnerships. Their generous donation of $10,800 has been instrumental in supporting my summer transportation project. Since 2022, I have maintained an ongoing dialogue with Ms. Kelly Hensley, exploring avenues to deepen Cleveland Clinic's involvement with St. Lucie County Public Schools. In January of this year, I proposed a comprehensive wellness initiative aimed at enhancing our transportation department. This initiative encompassed the reimbursement, I'm sorry, the refurbishment of our breakroom, lobby, and workspaces across all three of our locations. The objective was to cultivate a rejuvenated environment, fostering not only elevated employee morale, but also bolstering overall social and mental well-being. Ms. Hensley was enthusiastic about this proposal and successfully secured grant funding for St. Lucie County Schools, subsequent to receiving a preliminary list of intended purchases. Together with the transportation department, Kelly and I meticulously orchestrated a timeline to initiate the project. Additionally, Cleveland Clinic graciously provided a group of volunteers engrossing the community and significantly contributing to the tasks at hand. Thanks to the exemplary cooperation of all involved, we executed the project seamlessly according to plan. I extend my personal gratitude to each individual who contributed to this endeavor. At this moment, I'd like to take a brief minute and show you a video of the project as it unfolded.
Cleveland Clinic is proud to partner with the St. Lucie County Public School System to take care of the bus drivers. We want to care about their health and their wellness. So renovating the bus stations was really critical because we feel that they should have a space that feels like home away from their home.
Lot happier coming to work and stuff, having a new desk and a new kitchen and stuff. It's a great atmosphere.
Just so nice. You guys are awesome. We thank you so much for what you did here. We appreciate it.
It looks great. I love the greenery.
It changes the whole environment. It really does.
It's outstanding. You know, it looks very inviting, soothing.
This is beautiful. I really like what you guys have done. I've got 27, almost 28 years of school district experience throughout the state. This is the first time I've seen this done.
It really is a very nice way to start the new school year.
In my capacity... In my capacity as the Wellness Manager for St. Lucie Public Schools, along with the entire transportation staff and department, I wish to reiterate our profound gratitude to Cleveland Clinic Florida, the dedicated volunteers, and of course, Ms. Kelly Hensley. It is with great pleasure that we present Ms. Kelly Hensley with this plaque of appreciation and recognition of her outstanding service to our district. Regrettably, due to scheduling conflicts, Ms. Hensley is unable to be with us today, but in her stead, Ms. Holly Bandish, the Community Impact Project Manager, who also played a crucial role, will accept this plaque on her behalf.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to invite Doug Demery, Representative from Herff Jones, to the podium, who would like to make a special presentation to our Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here. Board Members, Chair, Dr. Prince. We at Herff Jones are lucky enough to work with about all the schools in St. Lucie County with graduation supplies and caps and gowns, and we have done a lot of prestigious awards in the past. We've done Super Bowl rings, World Series rings, Heisman trophies, Daytona 500 champion rings, and things like that. But there's nothing more important than doing, recognizing teachers and giving them awards. My, uh, my brother's a teacher, my sister-in-law is plural, are teachers in education. My dad coached, so this is pretty important to us. So we're lucky enough to manufacture our award of the Teacher of the Year ring for Anna. So Anna, if you wouldn't mind coming up, and I'll present you with your Teacher of the Year ring. Congratulations.
I'd also like to add, Doug approached me about a very special presentation, that we've got someone that coordinates all of our Teacher of the Year efforts, puts a tremendous amount of work into it with the selection process, getting committees together. And Doug approached me. We do have a 1994 Teacher of the Year Award winner that's also one of our, and Doug wanted to present Dr. Kevin Perry with his ring for Teacher of the Year, 1994. And I would invite all of the audience, when you exit out that door, look to your left, and you'll see the very young Dr. Kevin Perry there.
Thank you so much. All right, at this time, we're going to move on to our Star Awards. First, we have William Faitella, AC Technician, who was nominated by Heather Rixsecker, Principal at Fairlon. And she states, "I would like to nominate Bill for a Star Award. When something goes wrong at our school, Bill is always right there to help make it right. His friendly disposition makes him a joy to work with, and we know we can always count on him. We are so thankful to have his constant support and help." Is William here? Or... Okay, he's not here. He's probably fixing an air conditioner somewhere. So we appreciate him very much. Okay, at this time, Carolyn Redding, Behavior Specialist, who was nominated by Assistant Principal Matt Roy from Southport. He states that Ms. Redding has been working with the school for the last few months, engaging staff in professional learning called Tough Kids Toolbox Training. Carolyn told the school that she was invested in making sure that she was serving the faculty and staff to make sure they were receiving the support they needed for their students. This is an exemplar of someone who is going above and beyond to make sure that the students receive the very best, and the students... And the school says, "We appreciate you, Carolyn Redding." Is Carolyn here? All right, come on forward, please. Okay, thank you so much and congratulations. Next, we have Natasha Santoro, who's Assistant Principal at Fort Pierce Central High School. She was nominated by Danielle Steele, the Literacy Coach at White City Elementary. Danielle sent in her nomination form explaining that she is a parent of two daughters at Fort Pierce Central High School. And it's really a twofold nomination. First, from a professional standpoint, Ms. Santoro graciously helped White City School pull off an amazing fifth grade graduation in the Fort Pierce Central's beautiful auditorium last May. Of equal importance, her graduating senior daughter was having trouble getting her final transcripts delivered to the University of West Florida. Natasha took time out of her summer break to go into the school to make sure that those transcripts were transmitted properly to the school before the scholarship deadline. That occurred and the family is very appreciative. So congratulations and thank you, Ms. Santoro. All right, congratulations and thank you. And that concludes the Special Orders of Business for this evening.
As we continue through this meeting, we're going to go ahead to our ESOL report. Is anyone here to, is anyone here to represent? Yes ma'am, you're ESOL? Go ahead.
Good evening, School Board Members, Chairman Ingersoll, and Superintendent Prince. I'm Laura Levitt Estema. I am an Education Support Professional in this district. And tonight, I stand as a representative and the CU Vice President of our union, the Education Association of St. Lucie. Our President David Freeland is unable to be with us tonight. In my 30-year tenure in this district, I proudly continue to serve our students and this community in the capacity of District Records Specialist and Records Management Liaison Officer. My tenure speaks volumes to my commitment and dedication to public education. As a product of St. Lucie Public Schools, like many others, I am a role model. Public education works. The system is not broken, but underfunded. This evening, I just have a brief report. I speak on behalf of all educators in the district, teachers, guidance counselors, office clerks, clerical staff, bus aides, health parrots, professional and technical staff, including ITS, and all those who stand behind the paint and the brick and mortar of our schools. The work we produce each day is phenomenal. Our work resonates in the hallways and classrooms in every school and these district offices. We truly believe that all children can succeed, no exception. We are here for the children and to earn a decent salary to provide for our own families at home. We are now in our fifth week of school and we have the 10-day count. We have been, we have had some issues. I'm happy to report, most have been addressed and quickly resolved collaboratively. Working with Dr. Craig Summer has provided to be a productive, has provided to be productive so far. As we move forward, we hope that the relationship will continue to be productive. Speaking of productivity and collaborative, we have had to put our plans for collaborative and interest-based problem-solving training by the Federal Mediation Services on the back burner, just for a few months. However, it's the union's hope and wish to revisit the topic. Information has been sent to the district team in this regard. President Freeland will resend the sample agenda and potential dates. Finally, we are looking forward to beginning negotiations regarding compensations and benefits here shortly. As we go into negotiations, I want to remind the board that as of last board meeting, the board approved a 26% raise for the superintendent. At that time, there was concern expressed about the potential to lose the superintendent, and I'm glad we still have him. I want to remind the board that we have a superintendent, and that position is not open or filled by a substitute. In the last report, the district had over 150 open positions. Those 150 positions are currently being filled by substitutes. I hope the board and the district bargaining team would treat the situation which our frontline workers, those in classrooms and schools, during the work with our students every day, as a concern just as critical as the potential loss of the superintendent. I'll also remind the board that these positions include instructional positions as well as critical support positions. Many of our educational support professionals, as myself, are still underpaid. With the rising cost of living, many are struggling to maintain a livable wage and keep food on the table in this climate. We do have high hopes as we head into negotiations, given the increased funding going to school districts in the Florida this year. I just wanted to remind you of the words and priorities that this board set at the last school meeting. Thank you for your time and your support, and we look forward to continuing our collaborative efforts this school year. Have a great evening.
Yes ma'am, thank you, Mrs. Everett. CWA report?
Good afternoon. I'm Martha Vickers. I'm here just to remind them that we didn't, we still negotiating. And I think Thursday we'll go back to the table. I pray God that we have good news. And just like Laura say, people need their raise. They need money, just like I said before. It's a lot of people don't even have a place to stay, and it's hurt. And with our bargaining unit, I just pray that you all do the right thing and treat us right. And I want all the board members, the kind of office, and all, we have a problem with the bus driver and the aides. Mr. Prince, our director, he doing his best, but we need you all's support. We invite you all to ride our buses, the one who have a problem. And then you will see the problem that the driver have seven or six of his own children in the back of them and driving without an aide. We need your help. And I'm looking for Ingersoll to come north and ride some problem buses. And then you all will say, well, hmm, I don't think the driver, the driver have to do what they have to do. Some be off on TDA. We do all we could every day. Mr. O'Leary know, Mr. Prince know that the driver do their best. Some driver do three runs a day to get the children. If the driver don't come to work, nobody work. And we not like that. We want you all to support the drivers and the aide. The day they told me, I told them I would come into the school board meeting tonight. They say, well, remember to tell them to come out and support us. Show their face, like on the first day of school, ride the buses. And then you all will have a different view on how a driver react with a child and why do they act like that. I talked to Mr. Prince. I'll be back to talk to you soon. Because it's some old issues that I want to talk to Dr. Prince. And we just want you all to support us. Because we need you all to support us. Because if the buses don't run, the teachers can't teach. And we don't want that. I encourage driver to come to work. And we have a lot of driver out with health issues. I understand that, and I encourage the one who can come to work, come to work. I'm an old lady. I come to work. Because I like driving bus. I like doing thing for the children. But we need support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vickers. We're going to the St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council, and we have a new face today. Go ahead, Ms. Shelby.
Thank you Chairman Ingersoll and Dr. Prince and the board. I am Shelby K. Sigman from Port St. Lucie High School, and I am representing the Youth Advisory Council as the chairperson for the 2023-24 school year. And I am honored to give, to be given this opportunity by Ms. Holly and Ms. Dimeo. And I take this job very seriously. I want you guys to know that. And going from a representative last year to this year's chairperson has been a difference. And I am excited to move forward with this group. I feel like we, as a group, can make a difference in the schools and give each child a voice in this school district. We had our youth, first Youth Advisory Council meeting last Thursday, and I know that we are going to make a difference. This group has so much promise. I am so incredibly proud of our representatives this year. And I think that we could seriously change the world. That's it.
Thank you, Shelby. Are you, are you missing play practice tonight?
Yes.
I thought so. I was sitting there thinking while you were speaking, I said, I wonder what Mr. Madden's thinking about this. All right, moving on to consent agenda item. Board members, you've seen the consent agenda item. Can I have a motion to approve it? I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion carries five zero. Mr. Superintendent, I'll take your recommendation.
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda submitted with the exception of items 13.5, which I'm withdrawing, and also per Ms. Holly's discussion with me yesterday, item 20.1 for discussion, the Big Brothers Big Sisters Agreement.
Okay, Board Members, you heard the recommendation of the Superintendent. I do have a scheduled speaker. I'm not sure if he's, I'm not a scheduled speaker, but I have a speaker that wants to talk about sibling consideration for Palm Point. Is Jonathan in the room? Is this about the selling of the property or about something else? Okay, just give me a second here. I'll call you up then. Board Members, we're going to go ahead and poll 16.12 and vote on that separately, just in case. I don't want to get caught not giving a citizen an opportunity. So right now, Board Members, you have the recommendation, except for 13.5 has been polled, has been.
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn, thank you. 16.1 will be voted on separately, and 20.1 will be voted on separately. Can I get a motion? I have a motion. Can I get a second? Second, do I have discussion on any of this? Seeing none, those in favor, aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries five zero. We're going to go ahead and take 16.1. And Mr. Gonzalez, can you please step to the microphone and state your name and just place a residency, and then you'll have three minutes, and Ms. Shattuck will time you.
Sure. I'll try to make this brief. My name is Jonathan Gonzalez. I reside at Bronte Circle, Port St. Lucie. I currently have, my oldest son is currently attending Palm Point. We were advised, along with the selling of the property, that going forward, only children within that zone will be able to attend that school. I know several families have been affected, including mine. And I believe that will cause extreme hardship for a lot of families and particularly affect both of my children's academic success. As we know, times are tough right now economically. So everybody's working full-time jobs to try to make ends meet. My family's no exception to that. With my youngest son not being in zone to attend Palm Point, it's very likely he's going to have to attend another school. Me and my wife currently don't know how we're going to be able to do that with two drop-off times, two pickup times, two different after-school activities. There's going to need to be made, a decision to be made whether we're going to be showing up late five days a week to work in order to make this work out. Or if my oldest son is going to have to suffer, we're going to have to pull him out of a school where he's formed a lot of friendships and the family, our family's formed a lot of bonds with the teachers at that school in order to go ahead and make this feasible for us next year when my son attends kindergarten. It almost feels like when this decision was made, I don't know if there was any consideration made for how this would impact the families of Palm Point. As you know, if you have siblings, these bonds during this time of development are crucially important. I actually remember when my sister first attended school, she had to ride the bus in kindergarten with me. She was very distraught, very scary, something that happens to a lot of kids. But I know me being there, it's helped her significantly. I remember I held her hand for like two weeks in order for her to get used to that. So I definitely know the impact of having sibling bonds there. They're a strong support system for each other, like I was for my sister. Kids often boost their younger siblings' academic performance as well by being a role model of how to behave in school or become another support system for knowledge in terms of homework and stuff like that. In fact, according to a study published by the University of Essex, the positive sibling spillover effect nearly doubles when they attend the same school. So I guess what I'm asking now is hopefully there can be a decision for an accommodation, at least for some of the siblings that would have entered in to join their older siblings at Palm Point. So here I am, basically attending my first school board meeting for the first time to express the impact this school board decision will have on my family. In regards to Palm Point, not only with my family being placed in extreme hardship and uncertainty for next year, but my kids will also pay the price by either having to attend separate schools and missing out on some of those fundamental bonds in life that truly shape who we grow up to be. So I'm asking the board to take special consideration for siblings who are not in the school zone for Palm Point. I ask to do this for the families of Palm Point, especially do it for the children. Thank you guys for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Let's go ahead and, Board Members, let's vote on that agenda item, and we'll just take it one at a time. So we had the recommendation of the Superintendent on 16.1. Do I have a motion? I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion carries five zero. Now we just need to go ahead and vote on item number 20.1. We have a recommendation. We have a recommendation of the superintendent. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, before you take the vote, I would just want to explain. I have to recuse myself from this vote because I am employed with Big Brothers Big Sisters as well.
Yes, ma'am. And this, and this vote is only giving Big Brothers Big Sisters access to, to, to the opportunities to come and enhance our children's education. There's no financial agreement in this. But thank you, Mrs. Holly, for clarifying that for the record. Okay, so again, we have a recommendation of the superintendent. Can I get a motion?
No move.
I got a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Do we have discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor is aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries four zero with Ms. Holly abstaining. Thank you, Mrs. Holly. Moving on to Superintendent Staff Report.
Thank you Chairman Ingersoll. At this time, I'd like to invite Adrian Ocampo to come up, our Executive Director of Assessment Accountability. I'm glad to see we've got principals here tonight. It's great to see that simply because, spoiler alert, there's some statistics and information that we have not shared with you that I wanted to share today because it really goes to the hard work that you're doing each and every day to make school the best part of every child's day. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ocampo. But then after Mr. Ocampo is done, Adrian, I need you to linger. It's not Mr., it's Dr. Ocampo. I apologize for that. Dr. Ocampo. And Dr. Ocampo, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right, thank you and good evening Chairman Ingersoll, School Board Members and Superintendent Prince. As you see, the mission of St. Lucy Public Schools up on the overhead. Our mission is to make sure, you know, if, if we go ahead and uphold this mission right here, then we make sure that school is the best part of every child's day. Now, that phrase, "School is the best part of every child's day", is something that we hear Dr. Prince say, not only as a superintendent, but also when he was our deputy superintendent. I was a principal and I would take that phrase and make sure my teachers knew that phrase. And that was something we lived by. And it holds true from the time the student enters kindergarten all the way through the time when they graduate. So last year, in 2022, we were thirteenth in the state for graduation. So as you've heard, this past year, the state raised the bar for our graduating seniors. I know you've heard that they raised the concordance score for the pert, right? They raised it from a ninety-seven to a hundred and fourteen and made it harder for our students to graduate with the required math score. This coming year, the state is raising the requirements once again, and they eliminated the pert. So that was and is a big concern, of course, for us and a heavy lift for our schools and our principals. So our graduation rate has been at above ninety percent for six consecutive years. That's amazing statistic. In this line graph from 2015 all the way to 2022, we see that we are one of only four districts across the state with this rate for six consecutive years. So as we look at this year and our projection for this year, I'm proud to report that this year, our graduation rate continues to be projected above ninety percent, in the nineties. It looks as if we're going to have seven consecutive years of a graduation rate higher than ninety percent. In fact, there are only three other districts that have that same statistical probability of having that, that statistic. We could be the only district with seven consecutive years of ninety plus, which is truly amazing. Our current estimate is only baseline and it could raise or rise slightly moving forward. So this is the current graduation rate for our district and our high schools. It shows four high schools are above ninety-seven percent. In comparison to twenty-one, twenty-two school year, even in a year when graduation requirements returned and even increased from the pre-pandemic expectations, we project that two schools will show improvement and one remain the same. They couldn't go anywhere. They were at a hundred percent, but two showed improvement. Currently, our baseline projected graduation rate is ninety point three, which is located on the bottom row in the center. So in addition to high school graduation, we have other areas to celebrate. Our middle school acceleration is another one of those areas. Middle school acceleration is the percentage of our proficient eighth grade students who have taken or are taking a high school credit class. So that for our students is typically algebra. Regarding the accountability cell for middle school acceleration, we were twelfth in the state. So this table shows the middle school acceleration rate broken down by various groups. So the first column is our free and reduced lunch rank out of the sixty-seven districts. The second column ranks the Treasure Coast districts by the most affluent to least affluent. And the five additional columns indicate the middle school acceleration rate by race and finally by district. By providing this opportunity for our middle school students, our acceleration rate percentage is twelfth in the state. I'm extremely proud of our black, Hispanic and white percentages. So let's review our black percentage. Statewide, black students are underrepresented. But in St. Lucy, their acceleration percentage is ranked third in the state. Again, this metric shows that St. Lucy Public Schools provides the opportunities and the fairness for our students, starting students on that pathway to college and challenges students to be a first-generation college student. So as we continue to discuss middle school acceleration, we start to dig a little deeper into the data. So we find that all student groups show an increase in the amount of students that have passed the algebra exam for high school credit when comparing 2015 to 2023. So in addition, a total of three hundred and twelve more black and Hispanic students pass this high school credit test in middle school when comparing ourselves to 2015. Again, creating that pathway for students to become first-generation students in college. So looking further, at the bottom of the screen, we see that the percentage of seventh and eighth graders who pass the algebra exam when compared to twenty-two and twenty-three is a two percent increase. Once again, another reason to celebrate. So this slide displays the line graph from 2015 to 2024. And it shows the amount of eighth grade students enrolled in algebra. So this year, we have one thousand four hundred and thirty-four students enrolled in algebra, which is a middle school acceleration class. So that's five hundred and fifty-six more students enrolled based on current public school enrollment and possibly receiving that high school credit while still in middle school. We still have some work to do because as you can see, we didn't reach the spot, let me go back. We didn't reach the spot where we were in 2020 before that pandemic and the COVID dip. But you can see that we are on our pathway to recovery. So if you look back to 2015, we have doubled the amount of students in this accelerated pathway, which in essence, and once again, you've heard me say it already, creates that pathway for our students to go on to college. So as the Equity Officer for this district, ensuring that all proficient eighth grade students are, take this high-level class, this, this high school credit class and receive and possibly receive that high school credit is remarkable. And it's something that we strive for and something that we hear Dr. Prince saying since he was deputy and now superintendent. So this number continues to increase as we now have one thousand four hundred and thirty-one students enrolled this current year, an increase of thirty-five students. So it doesn't stop there. So let's shift to high school and our college and career readiness information. So we are celebrating that we are fifth in the state for college and career readiness. This is for students enrolled and receiving a passing score in those college-level classes or a career in technical ed, CTE certification. So we have another table. And this one shows that high school acceleration rate broken down once again by group. The first column is our free and reduced lunch rank. And the second column lists the Treasure Coast districts by the most affluent on the top to the least affluent. Four additional columns indicate the high school acceleration rate by once again, race and rank. So take note that St. Lucy Public Schools' high school acceleration rate is ranked fifth, fifth in the state. And once again, our black, Hispanic and white students are outliers in a good way when it comes to the performance in this area. Sixty-seven point seven percent of black students earned acceleration in 2022. That percentage was ranked second, second across the state. So this table compares the 2022 acceleration percentage compared to 2015, broken down by groups. The student groups identified in this slide have increased significantly over the past seven years and have increased in the state rank by nineteen positions. If we look at our industry certification trends, it shows a line graph from 2015 to 2023, identifying the number of industry certifications our graduates have earned. So these certifications allow students to enter the workforce in that occupation upon graduation. In 2015, we had one thousand one hundred and sixty-two students graduating with an industry certification compared to three thousand four hundred and four students in 2023. That's an increase of two thousand two hundred and forty-two students since 2015. So in this past year, St. Lucy Public Schools has increased industry certifications by one thousand three hundred and fifty students. We were fifth in the state last year and we just increased by almost fourteen hundred students. Fourteen, I'm sorry, not students, fourteen hundred CTE exams. So realizing this increase from 2022 to 23, once again, we're on upward path and we can project a similar or improving ranking. So these are the twenty-one, twenty-two high school acceleration rates compared to twenty-two, twenty-three projected acceleration rates. Two schools increased and LPA showed a significant improvement. Overall, St. Lucy Public School did show a small percentage increase. So just to summarize and to read each one of these different data points that we talked about, St. Lucy Public Schools' graduation rate will be above ninety percent for seven years in a row. We could be the only district that gets to brag about that accomplishment. We have a two percent increase in students passing in middle school algebra and a projected increase of point one in high school acceleration. So as I was preparing these slides, it dawned on me, you know, that all of these various percentages or point differences and increases, you know, affect individual students and families profoundly. And I realized that not only was I putting this presentation together, you know, and just with, with these numbers, but my own son was involved in making these various data points. So when eighteen, nineteen, he was a middle school student at Southport Middle School. He was with Nicole Talis. And she made sure that he was in algebra and passed that year as an eighth grader. He had that high school credit. He went to high school, went to Centennial High School. Mrs. Popwell, Principal of Centennial, made sure that he was enrolled in the Marine Outboard Program there. And he got his first taste in loving mechanics. Well, two years later, he transferred to Port St. Lucy High School. And what did he enroll in over there? He enrolled with Miss, now Miss Brooke Wiggington, okay, in automotive and started his pathway in getting those CTE certifications, which right away, when he was sixteen years old, was making great money as a student in our community with those CTEs. And now, upon graduation, he's in a program up in Orlando. And when he was at Port St. Lucy High, he took that field trip to Orlando. And you know who would like helped do all that? Jerry Early, who was an assistant principal at the time, who is now a principal. And he pushed James to go up to Orlando, take that tour of the school. And that's where he is attending now and working in the field as a diesel mechanic, as an eighteen-year-old student. All of these accomplishments would not have been done if it wasn't for the men and women who were principals of those schools at the time. So I know when I go through this data, you know, and there's increases here and, you know, and there's just, and their numbers, but they have profound effect on students and their families. And, you know, it's, the, the accomplishments are really amazing. And it really is because of the men and women, you know, that you see above you in, in this slide and the women, men and women in this room. So they make that all possible. As Dr. Prince, you know, just to quote him one more time, that they are the lifeblood of our district. Let's give him a round of applause. So we've seen this before. And this is a great, you know, rendition of our Florida and, and Florida with St. Lucy Public Schools as a destination district. But we're no longer just that district halfway between Daytona Beach and Miami. We are one of those districts that families and employees come to because we are a destination district and because we realize excellence. As you heard from the, those, those various areas that we talked about and we're making such great progress in.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Adrian, real quick, just tee up slide seven and leave it. And then I'm going to move on and I'll come back to that in just a minute for the TV audience. At this time, I wanted to bring up one of our new folks that we've stolen from Alachua County. And this individual served a similar role in Alachua County, has worked for the DOE. But now we have secured her services and the board approved her at the workshop. But we'd never got to properly welcome her. So at this time, I'd like to introduce the new Director of Student, School Renewal, Ms. Diane Leenenbach. Diane? Got it, Adrian? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Prince, Chair Ingersoll, Vice Chair Holly, esteemed board members, and again Superintendent Prince. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity to join this destination district. I will say that those data points may sound or, or not be understood by everyone, but they are really a part of why I did choose to come to St. Lucy. So I'm already proud of those numbers, even though I didn't really have a whole lot to do with them yet. But I'm looking forward to that. It's both an honor and a privilege to serve now as the Director of School Renewal in a district with, with which we serve in a strong commitment to continuous improvement in all facets of education and all the assets to our society. I am eager to serve our district's school leaders, instructional partners, our teachers and our support professionals to work together to meet the needs of our community through our students, ensuring that all students experience the absolute best education that we can provide to help them each and individually achieve their maximum potential with their knowledge, skills and desire to succeed. I want to thank you for this warm St. Lucy welcome. And I would be remiss if I didn't also thank my family. Sorry. Especially my husband, Gary, and our two sons, Drew and Gavin, as we relocate here to the number one district in the Treasure Coast. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leenenbach. And just for, once again, it just goes to show the board as a destination district, recruiting Ms. Leenenbach was a priority of mine over the summer. And I can just say, I know what it means to move and the pressures and stress that puts on your life. So the fact that you were willing to do that and call St. Lucy County your home, I want to thank you and I promise. to thank you, and I promise you won't regret it. So a couple of things before I, before I talk about this slide. I just wanted to thank the LPA Jazz Band, the St. Lucie West Centennial High School Navy ROTC, the Belle of Wauk chorus from LPA, and also I wanted to thank Shelby Sigmund. Congratulations and well done with the Youth Advisory Council. I'm looking forward to hearing more from you. We got a very important recognition. The board is not really aware of this, but we will be sharing it next month and doing an official recognition, and that's the St. Lucy Public Schools has been selected as a Cognia System of Distinction. That is a recognition through the accreditation organization. To give you an, an idea of how difficult it is to achieve this, out of 1,100 schools that went through the accreditation process, eight were recognized. So I want to congratulate Bridget Hargadine for coordinating that at work, and really it's the work that our principals do in our schools. I can't tell you how much I appreciate you, but it's recognitions that are national recognitions like that that really shine a spotlight on the work that is happening in St. Lucie County. I also wanted to say, on a, on another note, Sam Gaines, Academy of Emerging Technologies, has been named a nationally certified magnet school. That is, once again, something we will recognize next month at a board meeting. Only, only thirty-one schools from across the nation receive this recognition, so it is, it's a very difficult accomplishment, and that's fantastic news. I'd also invite the board, you do have a professional development schedule menu that we provided you. Tomorrow is a professional learning day for teachers and staff. It provides a menu if any of the board members wanted to visit any of those professional, professional learning opportunities. All of our teachers will be involved. It provides the locations and times of those in case any board members are interested. Also, September twenty-first is the College Fair at the Fenn Center from six to eight p.m. We'll have ninety college universities and post-secondary opportunities for students such as technical colleges and representatives also from the military. So I want to make sure our seniors get those opportunities. We'll be pushing that information out also through social media, but through our counselors and principals. September twenty-second is a very important day too, because it's a ribbon-cutting day for the new and improved North County Bus Compound. That's going to be at eleven o'clock, and all of you got an invite, and that's for the board there. I just wanted to focus also on the flawless opening of school. I can't think of a more perfect start of the school year, and as a former principal, I know when bad things are going to happen, it usually happens the first day. And I can't tell you how our principals were prepared for every eventuality that occurred, and you just did a masterful job, and that goes back to why you were selected to do those jobs in the first place because of your decision-making and the work ethic you have with our boys and girls each and every day. So congratulations to the principals. Principals, you do know, I've visited about ten schools about a week and a half ago. I do give you the courtesy of sending that information out. I'm going to be starting another round next week, and I will provide the dates and the timeframes that I'll be there. If any principals have any issues with those time, I'm very flexible, and I want to make sure. I value your time, and if it's not good for you, just let me know, and I'd be happy to accommodate. I respect your time, and I respect you. I also wanted to go back to this slide. Why I wanted to focus on this slide, because this is our culture, and our culture is perpetuated by our principals. Success in St. Lucie County and opportunity in St. Lucie County is colorblind. It is colorblind. These numbers illustrate that. The students that are, we're creating thousands of first-generation college students every year, and it starts in middle school. If middle school kids are offered the opportunity to take algebra or geometry, that opens a pathway for them to take college, they're taking a high school course in middle school, it opens a pathway to them to take college courses in high school. And you can see by these numbers, the culture here from 2015 to what it is now is our children have opportunity. It doesn't matter what you look like, where you come from, you will have an opportunity to be successful, and we're going to make sure you're successful. And in fact, I like to say in St. Lucie County, we don't close doors on kids, we knock them down for kids, and we're going to make sure kids have opportunities. So the reason I say that is back in 2015, when we went to this philosophy that we were going to provide opportunities to all kids, there are people that said the kids will not be able to pass the test. They won't be able to do it. The pass rate in 2015 or 2014 was seventy-eight percent. We've almost doubled the number of kids taking that class, and all of those kids that are getting into those classes are kids of opportunity, and a lot of them are kids of color. And the bottom line is, we're going to make sure all of our children, regardless of where they come from, have opportunity, which pivots me to our principals. I can tell you right now, the hardest job in our system, other than our teachers, is our principals. It is a challenging job, and regardless, I can tell you, you go home every day, and I'm surprised you survived it because it, it is very challenging and stress-filled. I want our principals to know, regardless of what anybody says, okay? I am proud of you, and I believe in you, and I want to thank you because you are doing great things for kids. With that being said, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Attorney's report?
Thank you, Chair Ingersoll, members of the board, and Superintendent Prince. I do not have a report. I do believe we need to go back to item twenty-two on the agenda, though. Did we miss that item?
Twenty-two? Point two, point one?
Um, I have it listed as twenty-two approval of instructional materials. Did we get to that item?
Oh, I just had it under consent. I thought, I thought that was covered under the consent agenda item because we didn't do informational reports either. Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then, then we're going to go ahead and take it off the consent agenda and vote. I, I need your recommendation.
I recommend the board approve item twenty-two point one as submitted.
Board members, you've heard the report or the recommendation of the superintendent on twenty-two point one. Can I get a motion? Got a first, can I get a second?
Second it.
Second, discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries five zero.
One, one thing that we forgot to do, and I, may I speak, Mr. Chair? I'm sorry, I apologize. I, I had this on my list, and I'm so sorry, but we also have a new AP, and where's Kyle Cobb? Kyle, stand up. Congratulations. Thank you. New AP at Lincoln Park Academy. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly would like to see all the assistant principals and principals. If you would, please stand up. Thank you for coming. Stand up, principals. Come on now, don't be bashful. Thank you so much for coming out. Ms. Shattuck, is there any other thing I might have missed?
No, that was all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. School board members, report. Let's go ahead, and we need to have a motion on proposed greater Florida consortium travel, ledger, I'm sorry, not travel, a school board's 2024 legislative program. Don't move. I got a motion. I got a second. Do we have discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion carries five zero. Mrs. Richardson, can you start us off with our board members' reports, please?
Thank you, Chairman Ingersoll. Just a quick fun fact, I was reading about Miami Dade, Miami Dade's.
Mrs. Richardson, they, they can't hear you. You need to put.
Okay, can you hear me now? I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Yes? I was reading about Miami Dade's board meeting, and they started, I believe, at ten o'clock, and they ended at one o'clock, ten a.m., one a.m., and I was wondering maybe if that's where we were going tonight. It's, it's longer than the one hour that we are used to, correct? So anyway, funny, ha ha. Okay, so today I have a couple of issues or two things I wanted to address, and first of all, I just wanted to, again, just acknowledge our principals. I saw you, and I just, you know, wondered why the principals were here, but thank you so very much for being here today. It's so unusual to have our principals here. So thank you very much for being here tonight, and thank you for everything that you do for our schools, apart from our teachers and our bus drivers or for, or staff that's on the forefront, brick and mortar in the building. You know, I consider you all our heroes, frontline heroes, because you are the people that makes the difference in our kids' lives. You speak into their lives. So I just really wanted to take that time to thank you just for being here. I could just go name by name right now, but I, I won't, but you know, it's just enough to say I appreciate you for being here. Ms. Martha, thank you so very much for being here as well, and Ms. Mary, thank you. And I'd like to say to Mrs. Mrs. Olise, I haven't seen you in a long time, so welcome back, and thank you so very much for being here as well, yeah. So I wanted to, 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 to talk about two things. I did my fun fact already. There was an email that was sent out by our chairman to our principals and vice principals about regarding school members' visits, and I just wanted to be clear, I want to be very clear that I shall be following state law number one zero zero one point four two zero Miss Dr. Prince, in an, in, on the last, let me get myself together here, I'm sorry. This might just be a one a.m. because I am going to get myself together here. He made, I'm, I don't know where I put it, but I'm going to get it. Give me a minute. Unless you want to go with somebody else, Mr. Ingersoll? Okay, well, we have time now. Okay, so at the workshop, the July eleventh board meeting, this was his take on that situation, Dr. Prince says, and I quote, "Previously, it was in the norms that the board member checked in with the superintendent. I accommodated that request, that that be stricken from the record, because I said it was unnecessary that the board member, per state law, do have the ability to go to a school unannounced. I just want the record to reflect that in our norm meeting that I tried to accommodate that request by making that accommodation to have that stricken." End of quote. I keep hearing courtesy. Well, for me, this is not about courtesy, it is about a disregard for the law. We are constitutional officers, and we took an oath to uphold and follow the law, which reads, and I would read the law, but it's one zero zero one point four two zero five. In addition to this, I was in a conversation with the board attorney or board attorney who assured me that I was correct, that nothing trumps overrides, supersede, the law, not even courtesy or board protocols. That is my point. I can call, we can call, we can say, you know, that we're coming, but the point still remains that nothing trumps or supersede the state law, and I am going to follow the state law. What I'm saying is, obviously, the board is free to do whatever they choose, as we are all individually elected. However, we do come together as a board to give the superintendent direction to run the district. I do not restrict the board members, and I will not be restricted by the board members. I think a better use of our time and effort should be in the area of teaching and learning, as this is our core business. Board, do you agree that teaching and, 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 and learning is our core business?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm especially concerned with our reading and literacy proficiency level in the district. I had the opportunity to speak with the superintendent yesterday and staff, and I took that opportunity to stress how important it is for our children or to learn to read on grade level. They need to be reading on grade level. This is why we are in business. This is why this district is here. As you know, we are a data-driven district, and I am becoming a data-driven board member. I was told today that there are some things that I did not know, and we were surprised that I did not know some things. Well, I am a new elected board member, three years in the seat, so I do have a learning curve as well. Most of my information comes from the Department of Education website, so you feel free to fact-check anything that I'm saying. I do get my information from their personnel or from the website. So having said that, I'm going to move on to my second item that I would like to address today, which is the reading and, which is our literacy or proficiency level in the I looked at every school district in Florida on the DOE website, and I noticed that forty-seven of the seventy-four school districts, and why I say seventy-four is because we had FAU, all those FAU schools, we had the schools for the blind, we had all these other schools that made up this seventy-four. And that, the seventy-four school districts are at, forty-seven of the seventy-four school districts are at or higher than St. Lucie County school districts this year. This includes county-like, and I mentioned the superintendent in our meeting yesterday, Jackson School District, who has a high poverty rate of seventeen point two percent below the poverty line. They have a reading score or reading proficiency of fifty percent. I also looked at Miami Dade, a rich county with four children in the schoolhouse, because rich people do not send their children to public school, and their reading, their reading proficiency is fifty-three percent. Our parents have given us their best, they have given us their children, that's their best, and we now have the responsibility with the parents' involvement to make these children the very best versions of themselves. I would like to see the district become the destination district the superintendent talks about or that we, his vision. I would love, I want to make that vision a reality, but that starts with our kids, our children, our students, learning to read. I think that we need to be intentional, we need to raise the bar, we need to raise our expectations, we need to do whatever it is that we need to do intentionally to make sure that we not only match the state standards, but we rise above the state standards, because all children are capable of success, no exceptions. We have amazing principals here, we have amazing teachers, we have amazing bus drivers. There is no reason why our children or students should not be reading on grade level more than forty-five percent proficiency. So in order to make our district a destination district, I think that we, we need to focus, be intentional, and reading should be the number one priority, because if you can't read, then there's, you're behind. read, then there's, you're behind the eighth ball. There's, there, it, it hinders your growth educationally and intelligently. And that's my report.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, opening day, I visited five schools in my district, and I was worried about some traffic problems in South Port St. Lucie, and everything went very smooth, just to shout out, recognition to Mr. O'Leary. We did have a problem at one school, he cleared it right up, and everything, everything went smooth, which I think was smooth everywhere, so other than that, I have no report. Oh, and I didn't tell Mr. or Superintendent that I was visiting the schools either.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Mills?
I have a few, a few things I wanted to mention this evening. I want to personally thank three people here that did, was a part of the guests for the Speakers Bureau, and they will be aired the next three months, September, October, and November. Dr. Helen Wiles was a guest on the Speakers Bureau, and she will be aired throughout September on our television program, her, her life story. She shared her life story. Mr. John Jackson, I believe I saw her here earlier, there she goes, and she's our parent coordinator here, and she will be aired in October on our program, our school channel. And then Mr. Terrance O'Leary, he will be our November guest on our school channel. And all of these three people, I mean, Mr. O'Leary, you got to hear his story. It's, it's really incredible, the stories that were given from our very own people here in St. Lucie County, and how they've excelled in spite of challenge, in spite of trouble and hardships, and that's what made their stories so, all of them so incredibly important to our community and our children, because people often think that those of us that have been successful, that we had a silver spoon in our mouths, and so to hear the stories and the challenges and still see the success of people in this district is very inspiring, and I thank each of you for your stories. And if you don't catch it on the school channel, you can get all three of their stories right now, currently, on our YouTube channel. So if you'd like to hear what they had to say, please go on the YouTube, because all three of them, you can hear their stories at this time. Yesterday was 9/11, and I, I do appreciate the performances that we had here tonight. Our children are incredible, our, our principals and everyone, our, our teachers, because without teachers and principals, we wouldn't have wonderful children who have accomplished so much in so many areas, and those children were absolutely incredible this evening. But we had 9/11 yesterday. I have a niece personally, Cece Ross Lounds. She went down on Flight 93, September the 11th, 2000, and 2001, was it? Am I right? 2001. And so our family in the Fort Pierce area, every year, because she was our niece, we actually do the 9/11 ceremony, and it was, it was, it was wonderful. You can get that, and you can see that also on YouTube, I believe, on our school channel as well, but, and Port St. Lucie also had their ceremony. But I want to say thank you to our media department, because they were there yesterday, and they recorded the memorial service, and so I do appreciate our media department and how they go over and above to be out there in the community and to make sure that we catch these, these wonderful events and opportunities of what's going on. Last but not least, we are going to have, when I say we, I am part of an organization that many of you know of, it's called Save Our Children, and I, I'm thankful for the Boys and Girls Clubs, I'm thanking for the big brothers and big sisters, and all of the after-school programs that are out there, that are making a difference and helping us achieve what we need to achieve. Ms. Richardson spoke of the need for more of our children to be able to read proficiently. It takes a village to raise a child. It takes the parents, it takes the community, and it takes the school district, and all of us together are going to continue to work to do the best we can. Our superintendent here talked about, we have no color here in St. Lucie County. I remember the day when we had color, but we don't have none today, and we can see that as we move forward, and all of our children in every area is, are achieving and doing better, but we have not gotten there. We still have a ways to go, and together, we will all work hard to do this. But our program, Save Our Children, Work With Children After School, and we have an event that's coming up called Fathers Honoring Fathers. It's going to be a breakfast this year, and we had it once before, and we honored Mr. Jen. This year, this program, on the September the 23rd, will be honoring our very own superintendent. Superintendent, we are going to honor you, along with, I believe when we honored Mr. Jen, we had like 11 other people that were honored, fathers throughout the entire community. This year, we will only be honoring four people at this breakfast, and he's one that has been chosen to be honored out of the four. If you have a father or a male that you would like to have honored yourself, you can bring them to this event on the 23rd. The tickets are only $35 for adults, and for children, only 15, but during this time, not only will we be honoring these guys, great men in our community that are helping to make a difference with our children, we will have a buffet breakfast, and we have the Boys and Girls Club, we, we acknowledge them this evening. They are also partnering with our organization to make this breakfast a possibility, but we're also going to be doing golf chipping and putting contests, basketball skill competition, football skill competition. They have foot massages for the men, and they have beer trim and lineups for the men. So please, bring your male there and honor him for being a great father in your life, a great husband in your life, and let them enjoy that, that day. For any further information, you would see our very own Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Wild, she could give you more invitation, I mean, information, and also, you can get your tickets on Eventbrite, so you can go right to Eventbrite and get your tickets. But on the 23rd, that morning, the doors will be open at 9 o'clock, and all of these things will take place, and I have finished my comments for the evening. You're welcome. Foot massages, beer trim, yes, yes. Have your wife bring you, get a ticket on Eventbrite.
All right, I want to thank everyone for being here, and I, too, just like a bunch of other board members have been out visiting schools, and thank you for the opportunity to do that. Let me just tell you how my day went today. I probably woke up around 4 o'clock, got something to eat, went and saw my, my guys off at 7:00, talked to a few customers, went out and made a few house calls, was eating lunch around 11:00 or 12:00 at 14 Bones this morning, this afternoon, and went home about 2:00, and took a shower, getting ready for this afternoon, and I've been here since 3:00, enjoying meetings and hanging out with y'all. Let me tell you how administrator works. Look at Mr. Alfonso, Ms. Harrington, Ms. Rodriguez, they don't have that luxury. They wake up in the morning, they're at their school, 6:30, 6:15, sir, ma'am, and they're working hard. They're hardworking. They don't leave, they're still answering their phones now, they're trying to figure out what's happening, and they're sitting at a board meeting at 7:00 at night. They just put in some 12 hours a day. This isn't, this isn't just out of the norm, this is normal. For a high school principal, this is the norm. It's 14-hour days, it's the grind, it's the day in, day out. That's the real world of an administrator. So when we joke about long meetings and going long, thank you, from, from someone that lives with administrator, I understand what you're going through. You haven't been home to eat, you haven't seen your family, and it's important that we understand what you're doing, and I really want to thank you for being here tonight and all that you do. And this concludes our meeting. Meeting adjourned.